Good morning. Looks like this might be a long one, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Wednesday, February 1st. Oh, it's February already. A meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Weymeyer.
President.
Now, please stand and join me with the. We don't have an invitation today for Tina like we did because we probably really needed one today, but we didn't get one today. So we get to start this morning with some business. You just want to do it or?
Oh, yeah. Janet will swear in.
There you go.
We are going to start this morning by swearing in our new Register of Deeds, Vicky Hughes. So if you come up, Vicky, we'll administer the oath to office.
Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Vicky Hughes.
I, Vicky Hughes.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
Charge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Register of Deeds.
The Office of Register of Deeds.
So help me God.
All right, welcome to the big boys. Do we have any other organizational or, okay, do we have any public comment today?
We do.
We do. I'm surprised.
Our first one is Norman Woogie.
Oh, let me read this. A citizen of design to speak and item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business. And public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. All right, Mr. DeWoogie.
Good morning. There are quite a few people here today. They want to be heard. They're watching you. They're to see if they can trust you. We want to trust all of you as in any relationship. If a partner cannot be trusted, there is a separation. I'd kind of like to keep you some. I've done my homework. I found out that the good is on the way in the years to come. I also see the bad if money and ego power prevails. So here is my presentation. By the way, I'm Norman Woogie, 37, 90 years old. It's my first day. We need to get on the right track as our future problems are before us. We need to be careful, very careful. There is a bunch of changes in our technology since the beginning of 2022. I have followed closely to the use of hydrogen as an energy source. The beauty of hydrogen is its zero emissions and is available, of course, in H2O water. Toyota, Yamaha, a joint venture, and Cummins and Versatile, another joint venture, are developing hydrogen engines, conventional engines that run on hydrogen. Toyota has a 5.0-liter engine that takes five minutes to fuel up. It delivers 450 horsepower and has a range of 900-plus engine. That's how efficient these engines are, and they can generate electricity. There are foreign countries that are using pipelines to deliver the hydrogen. The 5.0 engine is a breakthrough to our energy needs. We will need to wait a few several years for that and the engines to come into full production. I am so excited for the possibilities of that technology. I'm going to wait. You can check it out. That is in our future for sure. Ten downsides of the wind turbines are counted by the number. Number one, it interrupts the natural airflow, which probably affects our weather. Number two, they create barriers against the migrating birds and put their lives at danger. Number three, replacement of the propellers caused by sunlight, strong wind, inhaleable are inevitable. We need to figure out the cost into the massive cleanup after 20 years and the expected added cost of the disposal of the damaged rotors, which are last usually four to five years. Also, the pushing down of the tires. I suppose a concrete tower basis will stay, 500 tons of concrete. The abuse of the farmland because of the underground connecting trenches dig about eight feet deep, bring up rocks. The businesses do not do a good job cleaning up the rocks. So the deep brings a rock, the bill one, cut it, repeat. The businesses not, they do not do a good job cleaning up the rocks. So farmers' machineries get damaged. It's usually a fight with them, and it's a never-ending struggle. Number six.
Norman, you have one minute.
Okay. The heavy generators, gearboxes, blades, governors, lubrication are all closely monitored as they were, those windmills run 27 for seven, 24/7. And everything wears out. With the end of the productivity usefulness of the wind turbines, they will be salvaged and junked into a huge junkyard in a massive cleanup. Check with the state of Wyoming, David City, Nebraska, and Sweetwater, Texas to find out what their devastating experience is. I look across the wind field and wonder why, why? I see the windmills as pimples on the face of Kansas. Thank you.
Jim Wallace.
Jim Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Road, Ottawa. The planning commission has spoken, the public has spoken, and the public is still talking about it. I'm here today to ask you to vote no against the Met Tower and any wind or solar energy and honor the moratorium on it. Once you open the door to this, you can never shut it. Also today, the agenda says the number three item is to consider approval for funding agreement between Franklin County, City of Ottawa, and the FCDC for 2023. But nowhere do I see a dollar amount mentioned. If the FCDC is funded with any taxpayer dollar, shouldn't the amount be made available to the public? Can anyone here tell me where to find the amount in writing? Is it classified? Is it hidden from the public on purpose? Item number four talks about the introduction of potential county application for MIH grant on behalf of, on behalf of Ottawa Destination Development LLC. This is a grant request to assist with the construction of 72 apartments within the city limits of Ottawa. It also states that no action is, it also states that there is no action at this time. This is an informative session. We will bring back to you a completed application the following week for approval to submit. But item four says this is a grant request. Again, how much money is being requested? If the FCDC is requesting any taxpayer dollars, this amount should be made available to the public. Can anyone here tell me where to find this in writing? Is it classified? Is it hidden from the public on purpose? What happened to transparent government?
Susan Hughes.
Oh, I'm Susan Hughes, 1414 Olive here in Ottawa. And I wanted also to address the question of the wind turbines and ask you to do whatever is in your power to stop those from becoming a reality in Franklin County. I'm sure by now you're very tired of hearing about this. I'm tired of hearing about this and reading about this. But I think it's an important issue, and we need to continue to dig out the facts. The more the facts come to light, the scarier they are. This corporation that wants to put these in is a big billion-dollar corporation from out of state. They don't get their money from selling electricity. They get it from grants and tax credits which come out of our pockets. But I feel like we're telling the windmills because they can afford lobbyists. They have high-powered pressuremen that come in and try to sell these leases as a piece of pie in the sky without maybe always giving them the full facts. A lot of times there are gag orders on this. I understand that about money. But you shouldn't be required to not speak about your experiences with this company. There's a lot of lawsuits against them right now for doing shoddy business. So that's a big concern. But I stand here as part of we the people. We the people are the farmer who is farming the land that's been passed down from his family, and he hopes to pass it on to his children and grandchildren. That's a tough go in this economy, rising costs, you've always got the weather. And now if you have a neighbor that's signed a lease, you can't use your land the way you want to. You're limited. You can't put up buildings within a certain radius. There is a lot of reports of the effect of on health of your farm animals, especially dairy cows. They do not like the flicker shadows, the noise, the lights from the turbines. So he's, he's going to have a hard, he's going to have a hard go. And we, the people, are the mother that just wants to see her family raised healthily and safely. These turbines create a lot of health problems. There's the noise that you hear. There's also something called infrasound that you can't hear, but it causes vibrations in the body. People can't sleep that have this. Some of these houses have been, they studied them, they have 60 decibels. The World Heather Association says you should not have above 40. There's also a study I just read, the flicker shadows, which are causes and problems, and the noise and the flashing lights can trigger epileptic seizures. So they're big concerns for the family's health and also their safety. There's a lot of reports of these turbines coming down, the propellers of them, all over, not just our country, but I just read about some in Australia. A lot of them are coming down. One came down in Douglas County last week. I saw a report of one that flew clear of the distance of a football field before it finally came to a stop, digging a big gouge in the earth all the way. And they also throw icicles, big icicles, dangerous icicles. You don't want to be around those. And they also affect we the people that just enjoy our countryside. I love our sunsets. They're not going to be so pretty with those turbines up in front of them. We love seeing the butterflies and the birds. We feed them. We plant plants to encourage them and help care for them. And these blades cause a lot of those deaths. We also enjoy seeing the wildlife, the foxes, the deer, the other things out in the pasture. So the health that affects those farm animals also affects these animals, the reproductive rates especially. And we just don't want to see all those things change. You know, we the people stand with each other. The farmer leaves his field to help his neighbor. The farm wife leaves her duties to help raise money for a family's need. So we, we have to stick together and look out for each other. As far as I can see, the only people that benefit from these wind turbines are the companies getting all this money. And some of the leases get some money from that, which they may come to regret. But at least they'll have that to pay their doctor bills and vet bills. Their neighbors won't. So I ask you to stand with we the people against this big-money corporation that's only involved in making more money and would destroy our quality of life. We can't, we can't vote on this ourselves because we're not a democracy, we're a representative republic. So we ask you to stand for us and to help keep Franklin County the great place it is to raise families and are living. Thank you.
Jeremy Morgan.
Jeremy Morgan, 2328 Stafford Terrace. I'd like to thank all of you for doing your job as civil servants. I know it's impossible to help make everybody happy. Nobody, not everyone's always going to be happy. I just ask for a moratorium on the Met Tower in lieu of the windmill farm that potentially, because you don't take your wife's saddle shop unless you plan on getting a horse. And that's what's going to happen. I'd like to ask for a moratorium on the Met Tower so that we can gather information and educate the rest of the county so we know exactly what we're buying. Because I don't think a lot of people in this county understand the complexity of what will happen if these things go up. And this is a mistake that will not go away after time. It will be up forever. And I just ask for a moratorium and to do your due diligence and make sure that everybody has all the information possible. And give us time to educate and make sure these things are something that is even viable, which so far the evidence has shown that nobody wants them. But thank you for your time.
Sabrina Medder.
I know there's people, some people in the audience are having trouble hearing. You might just adjust that microphone. Make sure you use it.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Medder, 3404 California Road, Pomona. Again, like this gentleman just said, thank you for doing what you do. Thank you for putting up with us and extending the time of your meeting. It's not just an in and out. Obviously, many of us are here to prove to you why you shouldn't approve the special use permit for the Met Tower. I would like to flip the question, and if you are for it, can you prove to us why it is best for the county and why it should be here? A Met Tower in general is pretty harmless. I understand that. But what it represents and the door that it opens is not harmless. Why am I here? Why am I doing this? Obviously, it's for the community, for the neighborhood. I have lived in Franklin County my entire life, except for two years when my husband and I got married and we lived in Topeka, and we realized Topeka is not where we want to raise family. So we are back. But I'm here also for my neighbors, the neighbors who have actually signed contracts with these companies. I have a family member who has signed a contract for this company, with this company, and I don't want to see them get screwed over. Also, question back to you guys, even though you can't answer them, is why are you here? I can, you know, why did you choose to become a commissioner? I can only assume it's because of the community. You want to do what's best for the community. So, you know, obviously, I'm assuming commissioner job, you didn't do it for the money. And I hope, you know, like other people in higher up, we kind of do things for shady reasons. But anyways, and why are we so passionate? Why are we acting the way we are? Why are we calling, sending messages, starting groups? Thing I could think of is fear. We don't want to sign away our individual rights to large corporations for years. We won't be able to go back and say, five to 10 years from now, and say, oh, crap, that was a bad idea. We shouldn't have done that. You know, so a lot of us are acting in fear. As commissioners and all around us here, you guys might also be acting in fear. The county needs money. If you stay and listen to your meetings, he has a lot of money that we need. I mean, there's a lot, you know, the salaries and everybody gets paid. And I understand that the county needs money to function. There might be fears of lawsuits from large corporations. These, obviously, Nextera is the large corporation that we're kind of talking about, and they hold out federal Supreme Court, or not federal, but Supreme Court cases like the Golden versus City of Overland Park, which in my opinion doesn't quite fit in this. But I understand they have ways to go. But fear, I believe in a book that says to not fear. And so I hope that we can make our actions not out of fear. And of course, you know, as all of us, last night, laying in bed trying to think about what I was going to say, little sayings popped into my head that I used to always tell my children or still tell my children and myself, and I thought I'd share them. The first one is, I always tell my kids, doing the right thing a lot of times is the hard thing to do. I also tell them, God has a perfect plan. Even though when we're going through life and His perfect plan, it does not seem perfect at the moment. And I also believe that God answers prayers. And I have learned personally that He usually does not answer them in the warm, fuzzy way that we want Him to. And I tell my kids, so be careful how and what you pray for. And lastly, we've probably all heard this, that haste makes waste. I ask that you don't rush into this decision because we don't know the waste that it can do. And I ask for a moratorium, I prefer a two-year moratorium, to totally decide if this is what we need. I personally am not 100% against wind and solar. But at this level, when companies are trying to rush it through, it's only for the money. And I believe, obviously, they don't pay for themselves, and we can wait for something better. Thank you.
Sean Torres. Oh, sorry, Chandy Proudie's next.
I also have Sean's on record. So I'll just sit here and play it in the microphone. Okay, Chandy Proudie, 4848 Louisiana Road. Good morning. I get that revenue is what makes a county run, just like a family budget. However, our tax monies are propping up these big commercial energy companies to begin with. I know that the subsidies for these turbines run out by 2025. And all the counties, even around us, are looking to get the project started to collect said monies and grants and subsidies. What's not stated is that after one to three years that the contract or the project commences, the subsidies are depleted and there's no reason for the operator to keep the contracts. So they sell to the next LLC, and the revenue goes down for the county. All the while, Nextera, in this case, will be keeping the land leases with total control of our land and eminent domain from KCC. Waverly has sold their contracts two times since the project commenced. Regarding the contracts, I've read it, I've seen it. There are 22 landowners who have signed these contracts. If you're a landowner that has signed a contract, the operator must approve your request to build a new building, where you can build said building, when you can build it, and how tall you can build it. The landowner has absolutely no say in what they do with their property any longer. Additionally, the operator does not have to tell the landowner or the county, they do not know, you do not have to know, when the project starts of the construction of the turbine. The place to construct the tower could be on a neighboring fence, and the rotor and blade can hang over onto your neighbor's land. The contract will be what goes to court if anything goes awry. And the person that signed their name will be up against the biggest companies in the world. Just a known fact, Nextera, which is backed by BlackRock and which BlackRock filed for bankruptcy January of 2021, that's public knowledge. You can look it up. Do we want them here? Shouldn't we be educating our landowners about what they're agreeing for to the next 50 or 90 years? Shouldn't we be having town halls or be being proactive? There are already 22 signed contracts in Franklin, 40 signed in Douglas. Do we know if all of the landowners' questions were answered, or did they feel rushed as well? I've heard multiple times that it's just an experimental tower. At this stage of the game, if you allow a Met Tower, that means you're okay with turbines. Truly, we do not need experimental data that we can't see if we do not ultimately want turbines in Franklin County. We just don't even need to enter the waters of the sharks. And I think Jeremy Morgan just a second ago said it perfectly. If you vote yes to an experimental Met Tower, are you 100% certain that there will be no risk to your constituents or the county at all? Do you have all of your questions answered? And if you have even one question, you should not be allowing any part of the project to begin until all of those questions are answered. So following that train of thought, logistically, each piece of the turbine weighs collectively 164 tons. That's a lot. And so I don't know about you, I have a horse trailer that's pretty long, kind of like a semi. Some of the turb, some of the corners at my house, I can't turn with my trailer. How is 120-foot blade going to be able to maneuver in our county? Also, how about our bridges? Are they ready for that weight? Nimahaw County.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Have said that companies do not put railroads back the way that they were originally made, originally created. I went to a Douglas County meeting, and I learned that the sprayer plane that goes over my house will no longer be able to fly. This will make it harder for farmers to fertilize. This will make it harder to produce crops and feed people out in the county, in the cities. It's all connected. We're all connected. And when, hopefully, you don't let the turbines in our county, that ecosystem will stop. There is a lady from McPherson County who has had to deal with these turbines for the last 20 years. And she is quoted, and I can send this to you if you would like, just let me know. But a special concern, and this is quoting, is the fact that when companies prey on unzoned counties and landowners who make land near, who own land near transmission lines, oftentimes the companies lease the land, make deals with officials, and are ready to start building before any of the non-participating landowners and citizens of the county are even aware what is happening in their own county. Please deny the permit to the Met Tower. Let's not even jump in the water. Thank you.
Okay, so Sean Torres.
Do we?
Sorry?
Can we do public comment by electronic? Do we allow that?
And what is it that you're trying to do? I'm sorry.
He sent me an MP3 of why he just couldn't be here today.
Somebody that wants to do public comment, but they're not here.
I, I don't have an issue listening to it.
It has nothing to do with me. It's just a full recording of him, and I'm just going to be quiet.
Do you have an address? You didn't write an address down.
He said that it's East Grant.
Yeah, he lives on, we could look it up. It's T-O-R-R-E-S, and it's S-E-A-N, Sean Torres. Lives on Grant somewhere. Is it less than five minutes? I won't hit my button.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Give me two seconds. I saved it, but it's not coming back up, so please forgive me. Have it here.
Hello, my name is Sean Xavier Torres, and I am a property owner in Ottawa, Kansas. I live over on East Grant. My primary concern is emergency and general communications in the rural parts of our county. Windmills are giant electrical engines on a 500-foot pole. They generate tons of electrical interference that could interfere with services such as KOFO radio and QuickCom internet service providers from operating in the area or severely limit their area of operations, which may be a violation of the license issued to KOFO radio by the FCC. I am not sure if QuickCom has any licensing to operate on the frequencies they do. My second concern is the healthcare costs associated with having a wind farm nearby. Regardless of if windmill sickness is real, there is a real cost to people going to see doctors. Who's going to pay for these problems? What happens if it is widespread? Third, maintenance and repair. Not only are these giant loud towers full of moving parts, they are in remote locations, which oftentimes means they become ignored and fall into disrepair. These towers can then leak materials and chemicals into the environment if they don't become a fire hazard themselves. How do we make sure they are maintaining the towers? How are they to be monitored? Can we require them to provide a monthly report on the maintenance and status of each windmill? Fourth, migrating birds and ecological damage. There are reports that migrating birds are disrupted by the operation of windmill farms, leading to the deaths of thousands, if not millions, of birds, leading to problems in other environments thousands of miles away. I don't think we have a right to destroy other folks' environments without at least making them aware we are going to do it, or at all. Last, it seems to me there are lots of issues with trying to put in a windmill farm when something like a solar plant or some sort of newer industrial battery system in Proximity Park would be a better fit for our county. We are trying to invite workers in, and one of our biggest draws is the natural. We are trying to invite workers in, and one of our biggest draws is the natural rural environment, trails, and everything we have been building. Building giant windmills and destroying parts of our environment seems to me to be the opposite of our intended goals as a community at large. I appreciate your time.
It's 513 East Grant, if you want. All right. Is that it? Is there anybody else that didn't get their name on there that would like to speak? Not sure everybody knew that, yeah. We do have a paper, so, yeah.
Tricia Webb, Osage County.
Address, what's your address?
15549 South Ratner, Overbrook, Kansas, 66524. I'm sure when you guys enter contracts, you look at the integrity of the companies that you are doing business with, correct? You're not just gonna say, oh, I need a new roof, or, you know.
Pull that microphone.
Sorry. So when you're looking at the integrity of the company, you look at past business, you ask for reviews and so forth, right? You talk to people. What did they do? Well, I came to your guys' last meeting, and the gentleman that they sent to talk to you, he lied. Every question they asked about the met tower, any turbines, I don't know. I don't know. But he knows. They already have a plan. Their plan has been foiled multiple times. They know a general vicinity of where they want to put these turbines, how many, and then you can also figure, if you look at Nima Hahn County, if they say they're gonna put 50 turbines in, if their subsidies get renewed, they're gonna end up putting in 100 turbines, and they'll keep putting them in more. They'll tell you they're not loud, because they can purchase silencers. So when you, they'll say, hey, come look at the turbines. So they'll turn those silencers on. But then, after everybody's gone, they shut them off. Why? Because the silencers take electricity, and then they're not making as much, because it's gonna draw electricity from the turbines. If you go on to the Vestas websites, the Siemens websites, General Electrics, all of the companies that make these turbines, and look at the brochures for these turbines, the quietest one is 104 decibels. So multiply that by 50 to 100, that's loud. And then they say, oh, they don't make noise, it's not that bad. But when you're multiplying it, it is going to make a ton of noise. The state of Kansas has pulled all of their retirement funds from BlackRock. They don't want anything to do with them. Who's the largest shareholder of Nextera? BlackRock. Franklin County, quite honestly, isn't a good fit for these wind turbines, and they know it. If you look at the state of Kansas and their wind maps, Franklin County is not high on the list, unless they plan on putting up 500-600-foot wind turbines, and then it's a little in the darker shaded area. This met tower at 297 feet, that's not gonna measure the wind that they actually need, it's just their way to get the foot in the door. Why is it 297 feet? Because then, it's under the 300-foot threshold that they need for that light, and because people complain about the light. One light is not a big deal, but when you get 50 to 100 lights, that's a big deal. I live in Osage County, I live on top of a hill. The Waverly Wind Farm is 30 miles away, well, 34, from my house. I can see the lights at night. So, everybody that lives in the county, at some point in time, they're gonna be able to see these lights. And if you're worried about a lawsuit, at this point, you really don't have to worry, because you haven't agreed to this met tower. If you agree to the met tower, that's their foot in the door. Well, Bunce County won their lawsuit in the Kansas Supreme Court. So, we already have a base, knowing that the county's rights are more important than Nextera's. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to thank the public for being respectful to us. As county commissioners, basically, our job is to listen, and that's what we do. We listen to you, we listen to our employees, we listen to our leaders, our leadership in our county. We're here to listen, and we are listening. I hope you understand that. And if we have no other public comment, one more. All right, we'll do this.
Come up and speak, so everybody can hear you.
Hillary Crist, 2349 Stafford Terrace. Good morning, and I, I want to thank you, as others have, for this opportunity to express my opinion and tell my story. I also appreciate the respect and the patience that each one of you has demonstrated to our community, community members who have spoken, emailed, and called with their concerns. I'm here to request that you all accept the recommendation of the Franklin County Planning Commission and deny the special use permit for the met tower to be constructed and operated in Franklin County. Furthermore, I request the county commission immediately implement a moratorium on any construction and operation of wind turbines in Franklin County, and subsequently, I request that you rewrite and amend Franklin County statutes and regulations to ban wind turbines indefinitely. My husband and I are not native Kansans, and we have only been living in Franklin County for eight months. My husband was actually born and raised in California. Here's gonna be a collective, ooh, right? Yeah. And we moved here from Elk Grove, California, a suburb of Sacramento. And I don't have enough time to explain all of our reasons for leaving California, but in general, after living in California and witnessing firsthand the overwhelming level of government overreach, the undeniable power of special interest groups and corporate donations, and the utter disregard for the tax-paying citizens of the state, we were part of the 350,000 people that left California last year. And we literally could have moved anywhere in the United States, but we chose to look in Kansas and Missouri in order to be closer to our family. So we spent 18 months working with an Ottawa-based Realtor to find our perfect forever home. We had our Realtor searching from Lewisburg to Leavenworth to peculiar Missouri. And when we found Ottawa and the incredible quality of life that this community has to offer, we were sold. This county has been more than what we had hoped for. We love the wide-open spaces, the rolling hills, the agricultural base, clear blue skies, and some of the most amazing sunrises and sunsets I've ever seen in my entire life. We have incredible neighbors, and we have made wonderful friends. The events and the festival that this community offers is bar none. Unequivocally, if we had known that wind turbines were also going to become an aspect of this community, we would have continued our search and moved elsewhere. Franklin County is desirable, but not for wind turbines. Please, please, implement a moratorium, and do not let the corporations come and take over this, this region. Thank you. Oh, by the way, Senator Mike Thompson will speak on wind farms February 23 at 7:00 PM at OMA. Thanks.
All right, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of payroll in the amount of $1,393,653, claim vouchers in the amount of $469,121.47, tax change orders in the amount of minus $142.06, the minutes for the January 25, 2023 meeting, and solicitation of bids for the noxious weed chemicals. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
I'm gonna abstain from the minutes of the January 25 meeting, but then ask for the rest of it.
Yeah, we might take about one minute breaks, see if everybody wants to stay for the rest of the meeting or not.
Well, that's true. So y'all don't walk out in the middle of us. We could do that, just take a minute. If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's fine. We do meet every week, though, and I know some people have complained about our meeting time, and, you know, if people cannot be here at 8:30, I know, I have people that look at our agenda, it's posted either Monday or Tuesday every week. If there's something on that agenda you would like to address, if you send an email, you don't have to be here in person to let us know what you think about what's going on, but we do, we do appreciate your comments. So we'll take one minute, and then we'll re-adjourn.
Pretty sure, pretty sure all these guys.
But they all did.
Yeah, they did.
Oh, my.
Don, did you see Tom Brady's retiring?
Huh?
Tom Brady, retiring, retiring, retiring. Tom Brady? Did you see that about Tom Brady this morning?
No.
He's retiring, retiring.
Again.
He said for sure this time.
Oh, he's talking about what?
His promise.
The tower.
Oh, really? Is it?
Yeah.
Did you print the whole packet out?
All right, thank you all for staying. We're gonna move into our orders of business. The first order of business is to consider for approval, awarding the bid for the 2023 chip seal project to Vance Brothers in the amount of $1,190,350 for the CMK chip option. David Lee.
Commissioners, this is something that, that we do just about every year to protect our paved surfaces in the county. This year, we've got about 44 miles that is centered in the north central and northwest part of the county. We had bid openings last, last Friday in the clerk's office. We received three bids, one from Vance Brothers, APAC, and then Harbor Construction. Ordinarily, and certainly in my time, and prior to that, we have gone with a CML chip, which is the Haydite chip, it's a man-made chip. That has always been a little more expensive than the limestone chip, which is the CMK. Every year, I, I look at that and weigh the pros and cons of, of the benefits to the Haydite over the limestone. And each year, up until now, I've elected to go with the CML, the Haydite chip. This year, the prices have increased considerably, which makes, in my opinion, the benefits of the Haydite material do not outweigh the cost. And so my recommendation this year is to go with the, the CMK, which is the limestone chip on our roads, for the 1 point, almost 1.2 million dollars. The prices have increased. In 2021, we paid just over $20,000 a mile for the Haydite chip. Last year, we paid just over $27,000 a mile, so it jumped, took a pretty good jump last year. And this year, if we were to go with the Haydite chip again, we're looking at almost $32,000 a mile for that, for that material. And so my recommendation is to go with the limestone chip, which keeps it about $27,000 a mile, similar to what we're getting this year. And I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions. The, it seems to be the, the biggest increase in, in light items is related to the, the emulsion that they use in the process.
Any questions? Or comment?
Be doing anything additionally to ensure that we're getting clean rock? I think that's been the only, the main issue with the limestone option in the past.
We, limestone's gonna be dustier, it definitely is. We will work with the contractor to, you know, try to ensure that that's as clean as possible, but that's still gonna be an issue.
Anybody else?
That's kind of my question, too, to get washed limestone instead of just unwashed limestone. Does that specify that in the bid? Would it be?
It is not specif-, well, it is specified in our, in our bid item, so we will-
That it's washed as opposed to screened?
Yeah, it, it specifically says washed.
Okay.
And so we should be, we should be covered, but that'll be a point of emphasis with the contractor. We'll have a, have a meeting here shortly to discuss the project and, and talk about the, the chips and expectations and those sorts of things, and that'll be a point of emphasis.
This is the company, is this the company we've used before?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if there's no other discussion or questions, affirmative motion would be, I make a motion awarding the bid for the 2023 chip seal project to Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $1,190,350 for the CMK chip option.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes, and after you put the chip seal down, you gotta paint, so-
Yes, ma'am.
The second item of business is for the 2023 painted, painted pavement marking project.
So you said it, after we put the, the chips down, we need to put the stripes on the road. Each year, we bid this along with the, the chip seal at the same time. Straight-line striping was the low bidder again this year. We've had pretty good success with their, with their work, and the price for that bid is $67,540.
How does that compare?
It's, it's a little bit higher, but not significantly higher. I, I did not run the percentages because it-
In this day and age, a little bit higher is good.
It's fairly close to what, what it has been.
I know, it's been, we do a better job of sweeping it, it makes the paint so much better, too, so.
Just so you know, we, we, our own forces go out, and we will sweep the, sweep the road and the edges specifically, and then we expect the contractor to do so as well.
All right, do I need, I haven't done a bid yet, or a motion yet, am I? I'm moving on. Have we done a motion? I'm, sorry. I make it, so affirmative motion would be, I make a motion awarding the bid for the 2023 painted pavement marking project to Straight Line Striping Incorporated in the amount of $67,540.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. The third item of business, consider for approval, the funding agreement between Franklin County, the City of Ottawa, and FCDC for 2023. Derek.
Yeah, thanks, Ayan. As you all know, this is an agreement we enter into every year. FCDC is one of our community partners. This was actually, the, the money for this was approved as part of our 2023 budget process. There was a question about the amount. If you look on the contract, under the section conveniently titled "Funding," it says it's $64,375, which is the same amount that we've paid FCDC for several years now. In fact, I would say Paul is, you can, yeah. Paul is one of the few community partners that's been able to keep this amount flat, so that's certainly appreciated. But I'm here to answer any legal questions that you have about the agreement. Again, very basic, this looks fine, and certainly Paul can answer, you hear from Paul almost every week, but any other questions you may have.
I'd like to share a little bit of perspective-
several years now. In fact, I would say Paul is, you can, yeah. Paul is one of the few community partners that's been able to keep this amount flat, so that's certainly appreciated. But I'm here to answer any legal questions that you have about the agreement. Again, very basic, this looks fine, and certainly Paul can answer. You hear from Paul almost every week, but any other questions you may have.
I'd like to share a little bit of perspective on this as well. As you all know, I frequently come here and let you know what we've done and what we've garnered for the county. And I just want to reinforce the return on investment that the county's getting with the sixty-two thousand dollar investment. In the last two years, a number of grants have been received that have funded, basically federal money through COVID, it's gone through the state of Kansas. The state of Kansas set up a committee called a Spark Committee. Spark Committee worked through the legislature, would decide what funding sources and what programs these federal dollars would be used for, and then the legislature, the state legislature approves that. And then Commerce and other departments open those up for grants and bidding and those types of things. So through that process, we've received federal money through COVID that was allocated to all fifty states, and so what was allocated to the state of Kansas, and then determined by the state legislature how those funds would be used. So we follow those systems. In the last two years, FCDC garnered, you may recall, all, the county got some COVID money. Well, a lot of the small towns in the state, in Franklin County were also eligible for significant dollars, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in money from the federal government. Those small communities don't have a full-time treasurer, don't have full-time staff, are totally unaware that those dollars were available. So FCDC reached out, helped them be, one, aware of those dollars, and two, help them get them. So about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars went to our smaller communities as a result of FCDC. Recently, let you know that in, FCDC was a key partner in bringing broadband to Franklin County, broadband expansion to our rural community. Those two grants, again, those are federal funds allocated to the state, and then the state forward those through. Those grants totaled nine million dollars of investment coming to Franklin County for broadband, so that our rural citizens can have fiber and internet capabilities. During COVID, you may recall, FCDC itself applied for federal money for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that was awarded through the county to small businesses that were impacted by COVID. So you may recall, I traveled the county and went in the small businesses and asked them if they'd been hurt by COVID, and if they were, then I could get them some, some funds. And so a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars went to small businesses in the county, not in Ottawa. And then just yesterday, I submitted a grant, another base grant round, which again is federal money that's gone to the state, and the state legislature has decided how to allocate it for two hundred thousand dollar grant request for the city of Princeton, so that they can work on stormwater. And so these are just some of the things that FCDC's brought to this county in the last two years. And so if you look at the math on that and you look at what the county has given generously to FCDC, that's one hell of an ROI. So I'm very proud of what we've done. I feel we've earned every single dollar. And as you know, I've been up here every time we do this, and we've been incredibly transparent. And I appreciate your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for the help, Paul.
Thank you.
Hey, Paul, I will make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Paul, you know, I've been here a long time, through a lot of directors of economic development, and I know people don't come, do you have a specific reason today? But we hear in updates and reports, plus Paul's helped me with tons of things in my district with my communities, and he also has helped me, I run a nonprofit, and we've organized all the directors in six different counties. We meet four times a year and talk about how we can help each other and work together, and that's never happened before. It's always been, it's always been the us, not we, when it comes to his group of people. So just want to thank you very much for all you are.
Thank you, Commissioner.
An affirmative motion in support would be, I make a motion to approve of the funding agreement between Franklin County, the City of Ottawa, and the FCDC for 2023.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And the last item on our agenda is again, Mr. Bean introducing potential county application for an MIH grant on behalf of Ottawa Destination Development LLC.
Thank you, I'll make some opening comments, and then I'll ask the, my guests to come up and give you a little more detail. As you recall, the MIH is again, federal money to the state. States allocated this to help with our workforce issues. MIH stands for moderate income housing, so we're trying to get housing built that workforce can afford and bring that to our community. As we've, FCDC paid for a housing study two years ago, and it was clear indication, as we all knew, we needed housing, and one very, the very largest need was apartments. And so we've been working tirelessly to try to attract different types of developers and investment in our housing to our community. I've been working with Mickey Davis, who's gonna speak here in just a moment. Mickey and I have been working on this for about a year, on different opportunities and trying to find ways to do this. This MIH grant, just thinking of all the dollars I just told you, if we were successful with this MIH grant, that's another two million dollars coming to our community. This is a key factor for us in the sense that we have to have housing. As I mentioned to you, the concern I have is the Panasonic way, with Panasonic coming in and providing a number of jobs. I'm scared of what that could do to our existing businesses and industry, and how they can keep and retain their workforce. So housing is a critical step, especially apartment housing. And so that's, that's what we're working on. This MIH grant, again, the way this works is these have to be applied through a municipality or a government agency. As you know, I'm on the MIH committee with Wellsville, I'm on the MIH committee with Ottawa, and work through all those. Wellsville will be making an application, this is round two. The city of Ottawa was working on one, I think that one kind of fell apart at the last minute, so they probably won't, I'm guessing at this point, have an application in this round. This particular project, however, is in the city limits of Ottawa. And so in discussions earlier with the city, it looked like they were gonna have a project, and you only submit one per entity. So I talked to the city and said, well, what if we, and I talked to the county administrator and said, what if I brought this before you and let you consider if the county would make an application for MIH? And that's what we're starting today. This is just the first discussion with you today to kind of disclose to you what we're looking at, give you dollar amounts. And Mr. Davis will give you a little more detail, but then we'll come back next week with a, really, a completed grant app. Those are due on the seventeenth. So we're still working through some details, as you can imagine, there's a lot to work on. We've having discussions with KDOC, we're having discussions with the city of Ottawa. You have a number of issues related to a new development. This development is sixty-eight and I thirty-five out there on the north side. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Davis to come up and give you.
Paul, can I?
Yeah, please.
Before he does?
Yeah.
I've got a question and a thought. Just to be clear then, because I can read this and understand it may be a little confusing. When you say a grant request, you're not asking Franklin County for money. You're not asking for local property tax dollars. This is a grant request that will flow up through the state for, ultimately for federal money, correct?
That is correct. The application has to come from the county.
Yes.
But again, it's the same as these other fundings that we've received. It's federal money that went to the state, and it would funnel through, and FCDC would be the manager of those would be received. So there's absolutely no cost to the county, to the taxpayer, from the local standpoint, it's federal dollars.
Trying to get those tax dollars back to Franklin County.
We're gonna pay for it, so we might as well get as much of it as we can.
That was my next thought, is this money's gonna get spent, so.
Money will be spent, so I'd rather see it in Franklin County. And like I said, we've, we've done a pretty good job of getting a lot of that federal money into the county, I believe. So this is another opportunity.
My next thought is, we talk a lot about housing and the need for housing for workforce, and workforce is a huge part of developing proximity park. The other thing is, you think about broadening the tax base and what that can help do for property values. I mean, part of the reason our homes sell for so high here is we don't, we don't have enough homes. So this could help in any number of areas, just more houses broadens the tax base, in theory, lightens it for everyone. So anything we can do to help get rooftops here helps on multiple fronts.
Yeah, I'm excited about this one. I know the last MIH that the city got was, there was no way there were seventy-two living, you know, units there, so this is exciting.
This is Mickey Davis.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity. This MIH is a MIH ARPA. So the state's gonna use ARPA funds, and then the state of Kansas has been very aggressive in creating funding for MIH. So the state's funding low rural housing throughout Kansas. They're competitive, they're being analyzed throughout the state. So like Paul said, this project is located, you might remember this back in '08. This whole project, this whole area was being considered for a project, and at late, it fell through. We got invested in it a couple of years ago in this whole track. And we're trying to put this whole track, we had a hotel going here, and it fell through because of the rain increase, so we converted this to housing. And with Paul's assistance, we're gonna put housing here, but we're also gonna carve out, we're gonna be plating this as we speak, but we're gonna try to get a daycare right there. We've got a daycare provider that we think could put a daycare. That would meet the other need that the county has, is additional capacity for daycare. So why, this is about a thirteen million dollar project in total. Why doesn't it work now? Because the MIH ARPA allows some fusion of cash. We would also use a TIF through the city, it's already in the TIF district. And using those two methods, we're able to bring down the rents and bring up the quality. The biggest problem developers have had is the construction costs created. Then you had to have high rents, and that wouldn't work. So the state came in. So what we're asking the county to do is to apply, it'll probably be about two million, part of it grant, part of it loan through the state. And then they have, the other application is tax credits. They, the state of Kansas allows thirty thousand per forty units, so one point two million for tax credits. So those are the two applications. Tax credits are through the state, state tax credits, and the. With those combinations, then what we do is sell the tax credits upfront, and we'll probably get six hundred thousand, won't get the full one point two. Now, the developer on this is done projects throughout the United States, I've known him for forty years. He did the logistics, did projects, he does multidestination projects. So the private funding that we'll need for this is in place. So you know that this application's different to most. You have to show, you have to have funding, both private and grants, because you only got eighteen months to complete this once they award the grant. So the state has really put the applications detailed in the budget, they look at the budget, they look at the people behind it, do they have the capacity to perform? That's why I think you guys are fortunate that we are able to bring it. Now, we know that it's competitive, so we're gonna keep to, to, we're just denying it. We're gonna keep looking for other ways to finance. We've worked with Paul, we're trying to bring other projects. So I think this could be a catalyst to develop this there. If we could get the housing in here, daycare, then the catalyst would be there. So I hope to come back on other projects. We also met with Paul on the industrial park. So he's been a lot of help, so we'll bring back the full application detailed. But if you have any questions, and all left, here's a handout with the picture of the.
So for the benefit of anybody kind of listening, the area you're talking about, back in the early 2000s, they scraped the dirt off the area around the old Underwoods tractor dealership, and this is more or less the west third of that, what's really a dirt patch now. What's the mechanism, so medium income housing, what's the mechanism that keeps the rent moderate? Is it a percent of?
It's determined on the market. So Ottawa might be able to afford, they might be in the middle range. When you get out, western Kansas, small.
Okay.
Our median income's around fifteen, fifteen percent.
Okay.
So it's a percentage above that. Computation for.
Do we take the federal data from what our median income is, and then it's a percentage of that to determine what a person should be able to afford for rent? Okay.
Is this the second, the second MIH, and there's three?
Well, there's, there's gonna be more than three rounds. They may put sixty-two million into the fund, and the basic MIH programs that are awarding five million every quarter. See, that would go quite a while. They added this one, which is tapping into ARPA money, so it's above the sixty-two thousand. So again, this is that Spark Committee from the state of Kansas saying, let's move some money, this federal money, and get it out into the community, so the state's not sitting on it. So this is kind of super funded on that. So there's sixty-two million that's gonna go every quarter for five million until it's spent, so it's gonna go on for a while. And find ways to access those funds, like I said, you indicated. City of Ottawa got some in the first round. What, this application, and Wellsville have an application, and I suspect one of those will be funded in this one. Both of these are ARPA, they still have the smaller, smaller, five million dollar pool, but these, this is not part of it. Those are separate applications, two, kind of a two-track thing on room two. Outside of that, as Mr. Davis alluded to, anybody, it doesn't have to be an MIH application. I was talking to a person, this could have been a problem. Out in Miami, just yesterday, the tax credits that Mr. Davis opened are available, so they can get housing invested tax credits, and they can turn around, yes, Mr. Davis, they can sell those for a discount, but it's another weird one. They could probably be feasible, and custom made, it'll be as marvelous as it is. I'm also. I also. Obviously, sit down and see, you know, doing a primary investor in this and get the. On here, I have full confidence, experience, and business. Lieutenant. Once the grants approved, and the input will be sent, and the clock's ticking, they have eighteen months to have it constructed.
That's exciting. That's exciting.
We don't know if we'll get this, but it's actually, if you don't have much to worry about, it's finished.
But if we don't get this round, we could resubmit it on another round, or find out other.
Yes.
Yeah, that's exactly what.
One thing I did hear last Wednesday when I was in Topeka was, it sounds like they were, because the MIH has basically been rural, rural communities, but they're talking about opening the MIH into the whole state of Kansas, and I'm just like, well, that's not fair. They already have a lot of money, and why would they do that, give it to our larger, you know?
I think the shift in some of that, or at least the discussion on the shift they haven't made yet, is the Panasonic plant and the need for housing in case you mention it, I imagine, and I suspect, I don't have any intel, don't know, but if we get another big project, I suspect it would be in the Wichita region. You're going to have to put these big projects where there's bigger populations.
No, I understand.
And so I think there's probably discussion along those lines. My, the organization, the Kansas Economic Development Alliance, that along here, where we have our language line of day work, having these conversations.
Well, we know, you're going, working with the city of Ottawa, and I'm sure that you've started those conversations already, and all we're doing is saying, kind of putting our stamp of approval on it and saying, yeah, we would definitely support it.
Just kind of let you know that we'll be back here next week with a more formal present. We'll give you something in advance that you can look at, so you have the details. But we're still working through that. We have had meetings, multiple meetings with the city of Ottawa. We met last week with the Kansas Department of Transportation, Mr. Davis has been at all these meetings, which there's some concerns, obviously, from KDOC, the traffic law coming off the interstate. We had a really good discussion, and he, workforce housing and childcare, we will make it work, because everybody needs that. So we certainly have the year of KDOC, what we're trying to do, and they also know that this is a 18-month project, so they can.
Those are the top two things we consistently hear from our businesses and tell them what they need.
Three, three quick closing deals. This funding is for large projects, so you can request up to 5 million. And so the 78 apartments, we've increased it by six, 78 apartments qualify for that. And two, second, we're putting that application together, attorneys, me, with the help of Paul. No county funds, no county staff, they just review what we get done. And three, that the application administration, if we can't put the money in the grant, we'll fund some money towards Paul to administer the grant for the county. So the gentleman spoke earlier, no county funds are going to this, staffing would be limited, and three, we'll help with it.
Would you tell your developer thank you for considering Franklin County? Because we've been all asking, why doesn't something like this come to Franklin County? And here we have an opportunity, I think, personally, it's exciting.
Hope to come back.
Yeah.
78 apartments, it'll be 78 doors, about 78 building, apartment building, 78 doors, 78 units.
All right. There is no action, no business action to be taken today, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
If you have any questions this week, Paul would be the person to reach out to.
Yeah, just reach out, we'll get more details to you prior to the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Paul, you might just show the audience here exactly what they're talking about.
This is the location, this is the old Underwoods, 535. So if you come into town, this is just big land right now, housing and daycare right here, helps in playing a restaurant or crime center, a combination of all the development. This is where the old Underwoods, 538, north, north. The RV, it's over here.
All right, we're going to move on to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I don't have one today. Thanks, Ian.
All good. All right, two's here. Sheriff?
I know we've been here a while, so I'll make this very brief. We are investigating a couple incidents involving some cattle in the county, and so we are working with the livestock agents in the state, and we've got a couple of them that we've been working with that are down here. So I would just encourage you, if you talk to your constituents and they have concerns, and any of the public, if they see something suspicious, especially out in the rural areas, please call dispatch, do not try to contact the people themselves. We do have strong reason and belief that they, that the people that are doing these things that are happening are armed, and so we would rather contact those people ourselves. But if they see anything that's suspicious at all, especially around cattle pens at odd hours, or vehicles that they're not familiar with or something, please contact dispatch so that we can get out there and investigate that and see what else going on. So that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me. Thanks.
Paul, I take it you're done for the day? All right. Does send anything? All right. I guess David, that's you.
I don't have, excuse me, I don't have much this morning. I just thought I would run down kind of the Pub Works report from January and hit some of the highlights. We had 30 different brush and tree-related projects that we worked on, 18 culvert-related projects, 15 ditch-related projects, signs and barricades, 115 different projects, picked up trash in 11 different locations. We bladed 685 different road segments throughout the county, and had another 41 spot locations where maybe we had some potholes or that sort of thing that we took out, and then we added gravel to 46 different road segments throughout the county. And that's all I have.
All right. Nothing, all right. Would you, Commissioner reports, Don?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, I was invited over to Miami County last week to speak. You know, we have the RC&amp;D that we help sponsor, and one of our programs, it was on how we can do better job of small farms and farmers' markets and different issues of food factories and so forth. And I was a speaker over there on one of our projects with the RC&amp;D, resource conservation development. And one of our programs is hunters, Kansas hunters feeding the hungry. And we work with a gentleman now, Tony Drossi, which is the state president of that organization, and he, Tony Drossi is his name, and he collects money, has been for 25 years, from different organizations and from the state of Kansas. They get a little bit of money for each permit that's issued for licenses for hunting and fishing and so forth. And what they do is they provide funding to a couple of meat processing plants that we use. One of them's Valmans down south here at Princeton, another's Butcher Block in Mountain City, and they pay for the processing of the deer and wild game. And then we deliver and hand it out to different food factories without, within the six-county area. And last year, up to this year so far, we've, this year alone, we've delivered over 4,000 pounds of packaged meat, all in hamburger, and so it's something we, they were, just many things that they talked about that day on how to improve their six-county area, and that was just one of the topics that they asked me to come over and speak in on as a representative of that. And anytime I get a chance, or anybody gets a chance to talk about that, you know, if somebody takes an interest and they volunteer, or they donate, or so forth, so that's what it's all about. So that's all I got.
All right. Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I went to Sue McKay's retirement yesterday. Been a registered deeds for 40 years for Franklin County, and had a nice reception and retirement party yesterday afternoon.
Nothing to need, Dad.
I was not here last week. I was in Topeka for the Kansas Government Day. Didn't get a chance to talk to our legislators very much, but we did talk about some of the things that might be coming down the pike. Sometimes we have to remind our people in Topeka that we're all in this together, we'd like to work together. Sometimes they come up with ideas that make our jobs harder, and we try to tell them that that's not a good idea. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but we do need to kind of keep track of what they're doing, so we know what we're dealing with. I did have an RMH board meeting last Thursday. They did, the board did decide what, how they wanted to designate the tax dollars for this year. I'm not going to report that. I think Dallas is going to come after I'm back from vacation, give a report about the hospital, and he'll give an update on that at that time.
Dallas being?
Oh, the, oh, Perkypile, the administrator at the hospital. And so that is out there. I did go to the lunch at the Conservation District Annual Meeting last Thursday. Chamber coffee was held at Ninth and Main at the rehab, rehab center, they're halfway done, and the part they've got halfway done, looks pretty nice. All of the doctor's offices have moved down there now, and now, and I'm surprised we haven't heard banging, because they're now working in our building to, for the rehab place there. So, and then they'll go back to Ninth and Main and then finish that all out. So I think the end of the year, they should be done with all the projects. And I did go to the retirement for Sue McKay yesterday, it was very nice. And I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything? Do we have study session? Is that next? Do we have anything?
I.
At this point?
It's Wednesday. I mean, I'll know by Friday whether or not we have items.
All right. Okay, so unless we have anything else, I would have a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Thank you.
All in favor?